Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Lauren, can I have a roll call, please?
Ian Hill.
Here.
Lauren Hirsch. Here. Laura Graystone. Here. Amy Condon Donahue. Here. Richard Driver.
Here.
Tim Penash.
Here.
Terry Steinbach is at seven.
Does that everybody bow to heaven? All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the divine. Is there anybody interested in reading the mission, the mission vision and model this evening? Amy, you want to do it?
I'd be happy.
Do you need me to pull it up for her?
Our mission, ensure academic achievement and personal growth for all students through innovative and engaging educational opportunities. Vision, inclusive community of motivated learners who are inspired to change the world through exploration and collaboration. And the motto, excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
All right, so at this point in the meeting is when we welcome public comment. Is there anyone in the audience today who would like to make a public comment? All right, then moving on to addition of a discussion item. Do any board members have a topic that they would like to bring forward and discuss at a future meeting? All right, not seeing anything, but as you guys know, you can always email me or Dr. Leali or bring me up in the future as well. All right, well, then we will move on to reports. We don't have a PTO report or an alliance report this evening. I just have a quick mention in my president's report of the election coming up in April 2025. We do have five seats up for reelection. If anybody watching or paying attention wants to or is interested in running for Board of Education, feel free to come talk to any of us. And also go to Vote Lake Bluff. Their website has all the information that you need, including the town hall meetings, which are coming up in November. Also, this week, we have the Principals Week proclamation, since it's Principals Week, and Lauren's going to read that for us.
Great. This is the State of Illinois proclamation. Whereas school principals play an integral role in nurturing a positive, student-centered culture in elementary, middle, and high schools across the state of Illinois. And whereas school principals are responsible for attracting and retaining, retaining the best teachers and support staff to ensure that each child receives equitable educational opportunities and services to reach their potential. And whereas it is the primary responsibility of the state of Illinois to provide adequate and equitable resources for schools so that all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And whereas the Illinois Principals Association, which represents over 6,600 educational leaders statewide, believes that educators' experiences and voices are essential to crafting effective educational policy. And whereas school leaders face many obstacles in supporting and educating our young people, and it's through their perseverance, passion, and hopeful leadership that Illinois continues to produce quality, career-ready students. And whereas we must continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals who have a positive impact on Illinois students and the educational system in the land of Lincoln. Therefore, J.D. Pritzker, Governor of the State of Illinois, does hereby proclaim the week of October 20th to the 26th as Principals Week and Friday, October 25th, 2024, as Principals Day in Illinois to recognize principals and their Illinois Principals Association for all that they do to help our children learn and succeed.
Thank you.
Well, I know I speak for everybody in this room when I say we are grateful for both of you, for your leadership and just the amazing job that you've done. So, thank you. That's all I have. So, moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Leali.
Yeah, there's not much, but I do want everyone who's watching to be on the lookout for our family survey that comes out in November, that we measure family quality of service and pride in our school system. And we would really love for everyone to fill it out so that we can get some good information on how people are feeling about our school. All I have for today.
All right, thank you. All right, well, then we'll start with discussions and presentations. And our first one is the audit update with Nick Cavallieri. Am I saying that right?
Did, thank you.
From Baker Tilly, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Everyone has a nice spiral bound annual comprehensive financial report. This is the district's financial statements. If you could just do me a favor and open to page 18 and 19 and just lay that flat in front of you. I'll wait for everybody to get to that. So, this is the district's annual statement. I'm going to provide a brief overview of it. But first, I'll start off with the type of audit opinion that we render on the district's financial statements, which is an unmodified audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you can receive from the external auditor that your financial statements are presented in all material respects appropriately, the generally accepted accounting principles. It's the same level of assurance that we were able to provide in previous years. It's what you really want to hear when your external auditor comes up, to talk about the type of opinion they rendered on your financial statements. We didn't have any scope limitations. We had full cooperation with management. We're able to satisfy all of our audit procedures. This particular page, I always like to just point out to the board because it's important to see how your funds operated during fiscal year. You'll see that you have your general fund presented, your O and M fund presented, the transportation fund, and the municipal retirement fund on page 18. On page 19 is the debt service fund and the capital projects fund. During the year, for the most part, the general fund operated approximately $197,000 positive fund balance increase compared to the starting point. But then also you transferred $2.3 million out to the capital projects fund, and about $30,000 was transferred to the debt service fund to cover outstanding lease obligations. So, they have fund operated within its, within its means. The operations and maintenance fund had a small decrease of about $72,000. The transportation fund had a decrease of about $400,000 with an ending fund balance of $319,000. The municipal retirement social security fund generated about an $8,000 surplus. Debt service fund, for all intents and purposes, operated within its means. The net change in fund balance was about $88,000. And then the capital projects fund, after considering the transfer of $2.3 million, ended the year with approximately $232,000, which is within $841 of the starting point. So, they have fund balance transfer pretty much aligned up almost identically with the amount of spend that you had during the year for, for that fund. Some of the things just that you have, you know, point out from a standpoint of changes from one year and next, investment return was significantly improved on during fiscal year 24. We're now seeing rates come back down in the marketplace. So, those types of trends will continue into the foreseeable future, but we are still seeing, you know, positive results from investment returns in fiscal year 25. Really don't have too much more to provide, but I'm more than happy to take any questions that you may have on the audit process or the financial statements themselves.
Anybody have any questions? We should do like when you come back every year and tell us that we did a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's always nice to see everyone.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
And congratulations to Jay and his team, absolutely, for everything he does for the district. We've had it. We've also been here for now.
Cameron and Tammy, you're all.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is speed limit on Green Bay Road outside of LDES. And Laura, do you have information on this?
I do. Okay, so, um, I don't know if the pictures made it into the picture. Yep, I couldn't quite see them in mind, but basically if you are going south on Green Bay Road, school is on your right to the west, that intersection of Rockland and Green Bay Road. I live in Tangley, so I see it, and people just come speeding south. And even with the lights which they put in, which is helpful, they still do not stop. And the police are great about parking out there and catching people who are speeding, but we have had some residents in Tangly Oak complain about it, and can we lower the speed limit? And we've had a few people ask, can we make the, just like at Deer Path and Green Bay, that light is a no turn on red? Can we do the same thing, especially because, and I know you can't, I'm sure you can visualize it, but if you can't, the pictures are helpful. When you are turning west on Rockland, there's that IDOT box there, so you can't really see around to see if you can turn right. And I know my car got hit like a month after I got it there. So, we've had some people ask if we can request to IDOT that we lower the speed limit on that section, basically from Rockland about a mile north, lower the speed limit and make that intersection a no turn on red. And the village is sending in a letter, residents are sending in letters, and I was, especially because the school is there wondering, we as the board could also send in a letter as like a request.
And do they know what the traffic pattern will look like if they change that to no turn on red?
No, I don't think we do know what it will look like.
I just think it gets so badly backed up.
Yeah.
After school. So, I imagine before they do that, I'm sure that's something that they review.
Okay.
Because it backs up all the way to the overpass, sometimes like at four o'clock.
Oh, with the train, yeah.
So, I think under the viaduct, under the train bridge, if you're coming from, say, LDMF.
And going west on 176.
Right, it's, I mean, at 3:30 in the afternoon, you'll sit there forever.
Okay.
Obviously, I think we all are in agreement that we want what's safest for the kids, right? But yeah, it's so, it would be sending a letter to IDOT.
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay. And the village has already sent one?
Yes, and it's not a, it's just a request, and it's additional support saying, we also think for the safety of the students, because there's one coming from the village that's the safety of the residents, and this would be more of the safety of the students.
Sure, there are different ones. And their request is to lower the speed limit from, is it at 35?
It's at, so it, it goes down to 20 when the lights are flashing, and there's a cop car there, so it's, I think, fairly good during the day, like during the school hours when the kids are getting out. But it's 35 right now, and I think it's lowering it to 30.
Okay.
Yeah, 35 lowering to 30.
And then making the intersection of 176 and Green Bay a no turn on red.
It's a separate issue. So, there's, we can put either both or nothing in the letter, but it would be either just the lowering the speed limit to 30 or lowering the speed limit to 30 and making it a no turn on red.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
Fully in support of all of those things. I've been, it's great in the morning when the crossing guards are there, but I go through that intersection and it, I've only, almost spent it numerous times walking. And right now, I think it's a no turn on red when pedestrians are present, which that, like I'm standing there and someone turns right on red in front of me, and so that doesn't need to matter. I think it's a good first step. This is a little outside of things, the, that whole intersection at the school, as people are coming from the north, the curve onto Washington is so great that, like, you don't know, you almost don't need to slow down to turn right if you're going south from Green Bay into west Washington there. But that's a separate issue, and I won't get into that, but I'm supportive of that. And over here, it's 40 miles an hour on Sheridan, which seems ridiculous since it goes past a school and a park and then the train crossing.
Okay.
And I know there's a stop sign, but I don't know if there's been any issues there, but 40 miles an hour seems too fast for, to go past a school on a two-line road, in my opinion, but that's just me.
Yeah, I agree with the 40, especially with kids crossing over.
Crossing across Sheridan, yeah.
I love the idea of lowering that speed limit. As a resident that lives like three streets from there, as you do too, I'd, I would, I would be nervous until we know what it will look like to do the no turn on red, only because Deer Path in Green Bay is my least favorite intersection.
Same.
Because it's so long.
Okay.
And I think people get worked up and people run that, they turn because they know they're going to have to wait longer.
Okay.
So, I wonder if that would happen, or if we could do during certain hours, no right on red, something like that.
Okay.
Whatever those who create the street and know what works from a traffic pattern, I think is, you know, who needs to make that decision, but first, from behind whatever makes the best sense for safety.
How do we feel as, as a board sending a letter into IDOT? We can, you know, table the discussion and figure out how to say, what to say, but how do we feel as a board sending a request like this? Is anyone against it?
I think it's outside of our box, but I think it's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not like within our job description, so to speak, but I do think it would need to be the best interest of the children of our schools. So, I, I don't have a problem with it, but.
Would this impact that safety? I forget what the old term, that, that report from the eighties that we always get?
Hazardous.
The hazardous? Would that like?
They're less hazardous.
Yeah.
They're already.
Because I know that Green Bay, that's one of the ones that.
It would not really impact anything.
Change our hazardous.
They would just make, I don't know that they're, right now, I don't think they're considered hazardous. Yeah, currently, so we're making them.
I mean, I think it's safety is. If, yes, if this is something we want to do, is this the type of thing we need to vote on?
You could just come to consensus, and then we can draft the letter, and then you can vote on whether or not you want to send it or vote on it with changes.
Okay.
So, what I'm hearing is reductions being to 30 from.
35.
No, from 35, but that section from the school to 176, right? And no turn on red during school hours? Are we requesting a study on the impact before, would they normally do that anyway? I feel like before they approve it, they would do some kind of an evaluation and decide, assuming, but we could also request.
Would hope, yeah.
Are we the, because I hadn't, I wasn't aware that there was any drafts or letters about the no turn on red. The only letter I saw was the one just talking about the state.
The same, Dick, same. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, is that like, is that our initiative? Are we, is that our suggestion?
Yeah.
Or we're?
So, they're, the village is requesting the 35 to 30, and then they've had residents sending in their own letters requesting the 35 to 30 and the no turn on red.
Okay, but the village is just requesting.
The 35 to 30.
35 to 30, okay.
Do we all feel comfortable with that request, 35 to 30?
Yeah.
I think we should be aligned with the village.
The village.
Okay.
Yes, for a person.
I think so too. I think the no turn on red thing gets a little complicated and is definitely outside of our scope because we don't know what the impact would be. Also, you know, the irony of being like, we could say during school hours, but that's when we have crossing guards there, you know, and so we've already kind of done as much as we can do. That would be my two cents.
Yes, good point.
Feel free to argue.
I should, yeah. Do you want me to get a copy of what the village sent in and, and like draft something that is similar, similarly worded?
That'd be great.
And how do people feel about putting in, so we won't have the no turn on red, but what about the speed limit out here, the 40 mile per hour one? It's a munch.
I would see what the village feelings were.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you on that one.
Okay.
It's a nice opportunity first to be aligned with the village.
Okay.
And I don't know, not that we should ordinate this, but I don't know if the Park District should be potentially involved in sending a letter.
No, I texted someone on the board asking, and I'm waiting to hear back from her. So, I'm sure they've been reached out to, I'm not.
Just since they have.
Yeah. Yeah.
People coming.
Well, if you can draft something and share it with all of us via email, and then we can add it to the agenda next time.
Yep.
Just to come to a consensus that, yes, we like it or we need to change it.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Laura. Anything else on that? All right, Principal Kelly Bay. Can you give us an LDES update?
Yeah.
And is your week?
All right, soon, Nate, yours too.
So, I thought tonight I would give a little bit of an update related to enrichment programming and the enrichment team at LDES. So, as you know, we have a newly developed enrichment team with four specialists this year. Their overarching goal is to close the opportunity and achievement gap for all students. Wanted to just share a lot of excitement around this team. They spent some of their summer and the start of the school year planning and preparing to teach science and social studies in all K-5 classrooms. Then a massive shipment of live organisms arrived.
Oh.
So, with the help of some students, they really rolled up their sleeves and got ready to introduce these organisms to classrooms. So, the, beginning the last week in September, they've been going into classrooms in grade levels first through fifth for anywhere from 60 to 90 minutes, and they're teaching right now primarily the science block to these grade levels. When they go into the classroom, that allows the classroom teachers to all step out and go into our enrichment office or suite, which has become a very comfortable, but extremely productive think tank and learning space for them, the teachers then to work on curriculum development with our GVTC, the Guaranteed Viable Transparent Curriculum. I think a couple of things I would share, this is really a win-win. There's not, I have heard so much praise and excitement from students, from we've got pig fish in our classrooms to we've got frogs and crabs, they're doing a lot of exploration. There's been definitely experiences outside of that 16 to 90 minutes as well, students kind of rising to the occasion to do some extra support and feeding and cleaning. But I think this is a huge opportunity for our students and our staff. The enthusiasm and joy around this enrichment block has been amazing, and I've also been able to make a handful of pod postcard calls that enrichment specialists have written about students during those enrichment blocks. So, I'm looking forward to many more opportunities in this area for Lake Bluff Elementary School.
It's very exciting.
It's been, been amazing, and I think the chance for students that maybe are kind of breaking out of their shell a little bit, or we're seeing some sides to their learner characteristics that we may not have seen before. So, lots of relationships forming.
Just out of curiosity, because the, say, enrichment's happening in fifth grade, all the fifth grade teachers get to come out and meet together, right? So, awesome opportunity for them. What does that look like for the fifth grade? Are we opening all the doors and putting all five classrooms in two, and everyone's teaching them as one big group, or are they multiple groups?
There's a few different structures. So, with four enrichment specialists, any of our grade levels that have five sections, so that would be second grade and fourth grade at this time, the fifth section essentially is dividing up amongst the other four so that we can stick with those four core teachers. And then the plan is really that the specialists are rotating through classrooms. So, Mrs. Eppienza, for example, isn't always going to be in Missoula's second grade class. She's going to be able to impact and develop relationships across the second grade. That really allows students to get to know all of the specialists, the specialists to support all students. At times, maybe they'll start in one second grade classroom, and then there'll be some rotation throughout the block, really just depending on the lesson. We want to make sure that we're thinking a lot about student instruction and learning and what's going to benefit the students in the room. Sometimes that movement can really help for learning, or if there's different explorations or stations happening. So, a few different things going on, but an opportunity for students to definitely move around, get to know teachers, work with different forwards.
I would say from the curriculum development end. It's been incredibly satisfying to see teachers have time to work as professionals without having to do subplans and worry about not being covered by a substitute or a guest teacher in the classroom, feel very relaxed and focused, and with Jackie's guidance, she's been awesome about planning really focused and thoughtful agendas. Each meeting has been productive, already lots of great conversations and change happening already in awareness. So, just a really, really great investment on both sides, so.
And flexible and responsive too, right? Like the meeting will end with first grade teachers, and you know, maybe we got to, or they got to many of the things or not, and, or realize, oh, this is something we really need to bring forward to, to next meeting and can revise and adjust that agenda as needed.
And as a reminder, just this week is our True North work. So, True North coaches are in, we're working with Tracy and the teams to work on inclusive practices across all the grade levels, and they're also working at LDMF as well, doing the same agenda. So, really, really great professional development and work going on that will help us in the future.
It's really fun to see this idea that we've been talking about now for a while.
Yeah, I think sort of uninterrupted time for student learning, but also uninterrupted time in a way for teachers to learn and grow and develop professionally. It's been, it's been great.
It's been great. So, just a side note, because I'm curious, are these living organisms? Where do they go over winter break?
Well, Kelly, take you.
The, yeah, third graders, I got a crayfish, are going home to third graders very soon, so I think families can express interest, and they're likely will wrap a lot. I, I'm not sure about our process for frogs and crabs. Maybe, maybe something similar.
I'm sure you'll figure it out. This doesn't deserve it.
It was a lot when I opened it, because the room was filled with pins and, yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you, yeah.
Kelly, thanks for the report, but I'm looking forward to, I'm trying to figure out so that I can sub one day, one of the sessions, but, so it's all at the same time for one class? And then it's a different class every day?
Yeah, so for example, today, fifth grade met in the morning for their 90-minute block. Yesterday was our third grade teachers, on Thursday is fourth grade, and then Friday, first grade meets in the morning and second grade meets in the afternoon.
Okay.
So, it's spread out across the week that allows.
And it's just, and it's one session, one 90-minute session a week?
Correct.
For each class?
Masterful scheduling over the summer, and I think there'll be potentially more updates throughout the year, but all, in the end, there'll be 25 meetings across the year that each grade level will have the benefit of having together. So, they'll meet 25 times across the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to also say I'm so happy the teachers are happy with the new schedule. The students, my third grader is so into this, like, it's been a huge hit with all of this press, so it's been wonderful.
I'm glad to hear that, yeah.
Couldn't have asked for a more enthusiastic team to start this off. They're like smiling from ear to ear, going into these classrooms, coming out of their classrooms, and it's amazing.
I mean, and they designed an instructional space or learning space as well. They're like, we want teachers to feel at home and comfortable here. I mean, that's not the most important thing, but that just goes to show some of the culture and climate and the feeling of like, they're stepping into a space of like, let's be comfortable so we can do our best work as professionals. So, I think a lot of, they've thought of so much, it's, it's a great place, and might be a neat one to stop by and see too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Blackmore.
Oh, what's the acronym?
Oh, what's the acronym for that program, the, the enrichment program?
Don't think we have an acronym.
Oh, there's not like four initials or something?
Hard to believe.
Maybe we need to come. If you have any ideas, let us know.
Good evening. Wanted to take a few minutes just to highlight some of the new things that are happening at the middle school. First of all, I wanted to start by talking about two new technology resources that have been implemented. One being Schoology and that's in grades six to eight, as well as the iPads that have rolled out in grade six. And I want to give recognition to our sixth grade team. They've been managing the implementation of two new technology resources at the same time. So first of all, the iPad implementation has gone very well. Sixth grade team, as I said, deserves a great deal of credit for that. With regard to the iPads, students have reported that they're faster, easier to use, more durable. Teachers have agreed. They definitely have an improved kind of hardware component than over the, over the Chromebook. So we're excited about that. One of the other things I wanted to mention about the iPads and we'll continue to push this information out to parents is when you've enabled the iPads, parents, that is to enable parental controls when those iPads are at home. So if they would like to restrict the amount of screen time or how much access kids have to them when they're at home and have the capability of doing that. Kevin has sent instructions out to parents. We'll include that in upcoming principals update as well, just as a reminder. We were able to check and some parents have utilized that feature, not a huge number and that's fine. But we wanted to make sure that parents know that it's available to them. So just like any new tool or resource, some of these things require some trial and error on the part of not only the students, but the teachers that are utilizing it. And that's true of Schoology as well. Schoology is intended to be, to oversimplify things, sort of a replacement for Google Classroom. If you're familiar with Google Classroom, Classroom is a platform that teachers had used in the past, although it has a great deal more capability than Google Classroom does. And with more capability comes more learning opportunities for us in terms of implementation. We've learned that Google Classroom and Schoology don't always talk very well together, but there's ways around that and we've worked through that. Teachers are utilizing that platform to sometimes hand out and evaluate and assess student work and provide feedback to students via Schoology, excuse me. Schoology is also a way that they are communicating homework assignments to our students. And it is something that we continue to work to find the best way to do things. So we're, we're off and running with both the iPads and Schoology. And I want to recognize Kevin and thank him for all of his work that he's done to help support our team with both of those technology implementations, providing training to staff. A lot of the training that we do, sometimes it's that you don't know what you don't know until you're in there and utilizing it. And so there's a lot of learning by doing it. And so at this point in time, I would say that we're in a much better place than we were a month and a half ago as far as knowing and understanding how those systems work together. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the change, a minor change in our schedule that we implemented this year. We implemented a parent advisory program where students, when they come into the building in the morning, two advisory groups actually meet in one instructional space with both of those teachers at the same time. That's accomplished a few different things. It's facilitated some co-planning and co-teaching in the advisory space. It's created some additional accountability for both students and teachers. It does create a situation where the classes are larger than we're typically accustomed to. Keeping in mind that the morning advisory is a relatively short period of time. On Mondays and Wednesdays, our morning advisory program is fifteen minutes. On Tuesdays through Fridays, it's shorter than that. It's just five minutes where we're doing lunch orders and attendance and that sort of thing. The SCL lessons are incorporated into the longer Monday and Tuesday morning advisory programs. In the afternoon, students are going to those same spaces for the most part. Now that MTSS, Multi Tiered Systems of Support, is in place, some students are going to their MTSS locations to receive academic support during that time. And then also students will be pulled during that time to go to, I'm hitting you with the acronyms.
I know.
ELO, Extended Learning Opportunities. You wanted to vinicat. So some students are going to MTSS, some students are going to ELO. And then the remaindering group is going to that parent advisory location. That's also provided us with a great deal more, uh, better space for our MTSS implementation. So in years past, we were kind of all over pockets of kids in a small space in the library media center. Maybe in one of the breakout spaces, maybe downstairs in a conference room, just not really great instructional spaces. And it created a situation where kids were moving throughout the building and given, I'd given times and given days to a different location and sometimes really hindered our kids' abilities to get to where they needed to go on time. They may have had the best intentions and gotten where they thought they needed to be, only to find out they were over there. And so by creating some consistency in that X block time, we've really mitigated those students arriving late and at the same time provided more opportunities, better instructional space for our MTSS groups. So feeling pretty good about that. We'll continue to evaluate how the parent advisory program is going and I'll be happy to come back and provide an update at a later time. But I want to give you the opportunity to hear how we're doing so far and answer any questions you might have.
Just as a reminder, you may have some of this maybe I missed it, but Schoology was really implemented so our kids can be prepared to go to the high school where they utilize Schoology and DPM kids also use Schoology. So we really felt like we wanted all of our kids to be on the same footing going into the high school and being, you know, really prepared with information about how that learning management system works and how to navigate it as well as parents. So that's really the overarching goal and there's definitely some challenges with anything like that, but I do think even that goal in mind is important.
I think it's really important for them to all go in knowing that so they don't have that learning curve as a freshman, especially if your path is to one another.
But I would say the students have really gotten a hold of it quite quickly and easily. I know that some parents have dabbled in Schoology. They have parental access to get in there. But my feedback that I got just talking with a small group of folks during conference time was that they still found Power School and the parent portal in Power School to provide more of what they were looking for, current grades, missing assignments, that sort of thing. There's a lot more to see in Schoology, but it might not make sense and it might not be as intuitive to a parent. But they still have access to it. So yeah, it is something that is a surprise.
Can I ask the question about Schoology?
Yeah.
And this may not even apply. So do, are the teachers all using it the same way or they're using it different ways?
So right now there's definitely some different ways in which teachers are utilizing Schoology and they're sharing those ideas as they learn. So for example, I know that Mr. DeYoung has done a great job of actually building some assessments within Schoology and has started to roll those out to kids. In essence, it's not so different than some other assessments that we may have built on a different platform, but doing it in Schoology. He's one of the folks kind of leading the way in that, in that respect and he's going to be helping it, provide some professional development to other teachers who would like to do that. I know that there are different ways in which, well, so for example, fine arts classes are still standards based in their evaluation of kids. So their Schoology looks quite different than more traditional points-based rating system that the academic classes are utilizing. So there are some differences and we are really looking for places where we can create uniformity and minimize as much confusion for students and parents as we can. Just today I was meeting with the sixth, seventh and eighth grade teams, talking about how we're publishing homework assignments and making those documents available to kids. In eighth grade, that's a group that's still accustomed to a one-stop shop in sort of a, a Google Doc where you could go and just see all the assignments for all of the different classes. Whereas in our seventh and sixth grade classes, they're utilizing more of the built-in Schoology capability where a student would actually go and look in their specific class and see their specific assignment. So, so there is some differences, but as we move forward, we're looking to minimize as many of those as possible. Minimally though, there's consistency for the most part across a grade level in terms of how Schoology is being utilized with minor, with some minor differences depending upon what needs to be changed.
Yeah, and I can imagine. I mean, it's only October. There's going to be a million different ways to do it. And I found that at the high school, I mean, everybody did it differently, but the kids, I mean, adapt to it, so.
And it's not just classroom use for Schoology. We have coaches who've created a Google, our Schoology classroom. We've had our library media, Mallory Jorgensen's created a library media Schoology classroom. And so it's a, it's a good way to disseminate information and to provide information, tell it to those kids that are participating in those sorts of activities. So we're, we're utilizing it down to the classroom setting as well.
Great, thank you.
As a household with both a new iPad and Schoology, I don't think much, but.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, the feedback particularly on the, on the iPads has been, been very good. I'll say again, this public service announcement for any sixth grade families, they're great in the sense that they hold a charge much longer than a Chromebook. That's been a little problematic for some of our kids because they're not accustomed to then charging every night. And so on day two or day three, they show up with an iPad that is not fully charged. So we're pushing out information or reminding families to remind their kids to make sure they're fully charged before bringing them back. Yeah.
Yeah, two things. One is, are substitutes going to be able to access Schoology for whatever class it is that they're?
Yeah, so the, what we have done for the lesson plans that teachers are leaving, if they're needing subs to get into Schoology is to invite sub one, two, or three, those are the computers that we have for the subs to use so that they have access within Schoology. Right now, I don't think we have a lot of lesson plans that are leaving that as a requirement. I think that they're trying to kind of work around that and keep things as simple as they can, but when needed, there is the capability of adding the.
But also just to be able to see what the, what the teacher has left for the students to be working on.
They can, and they can also leave it in different formats. They may print it out as a PDF. They may, but, but yes, it's, it's possible. I think that the teachers have found it easier to leave it as a standalone that's easily put into a sub folder than can be locked and not requiring you to be logged into a machine and navigate through the Schoology interface, but.
The other thing in the, in the parent advisory, I'd be interested to hear how it develops. And just, because in the afternoons, it's still what, twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes?
Yes.
The X block?
Yeah.
And my experience was is that could be a difficult time, you know, for a few of the kids to be focused. And being in a larger group, I, I just can't imagine that's going to be more of a challenge to, to try to keep everybody focused and on task and being productive.
It's also worth mentioning, there's two adults in there, which is something that traditionally wasn't the case. So I would also argue that yes, with more kids in a classroom, that could be potentially a thing, but allowing our teachers working together, working in a parent setting, and sometimes there's a third adult depending on where parent professionals may be assigned. But it's a good point, but still manageable size as far as, we're just accustomed to much smaller class size. And I want to acknowledge that if you look at a classroom of twelve or thirteen, which would have traditionally been our advisory numbers were closer to twenty-three, twenty-four depending. So I'll acknowledge there. They put two adults in there.
I, I, I think that just continues to their, your attention.
Absolutely.
To how it's all in the afternoon.
And I'll readily admit, there's, there's some push and pull there, creating the spaces for our MTSS folks and not having them working in halls and maybe creating better space for our, our students who need that support is a big part of this. But I think, but yeah, absolutely, we're going to continue to evaluate.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, that's up. Jackie Tippett or D sixty-five literacy update?
Hello. I'm going to provide a literacy update on kind of where we've been and where we're going in regards to literacy in the school district. This connects to our strategic plan goal one of implementing educational programming that provides children with what they need to progress academically, achieve goals and develop interests while supporting their health and wellbeing. So some of you may be aware that in January, Illinois rolled out a literacy plan. This plan had three major goals, the first being tied to students, that every student would receive a high-quality evidence-based literacy instruction. Goal two tied to educators, meaning that every educator is prepared to deliver that evidence-based instruction. And then goal three, that leaders are equipped to create, maintain and sustain conditions for that instruction to be delivered. One really important component of the literacy plan when it did get rolled out is that they were really intentional in not aligning to any specific program and really focused on some core ideas and concepts that were important tied to evidence-based instructional practices and really leaving the decision-making at the local level for what that would look like. So a little bit more details of what the plan entails. It's a really, really large document that has a lot of components to it, going into what evidence-based does include and what it does not include. The focus is really on tier one instruction and again, this kind of evidence-based practices. There's seven core components, the first being oracy, so that's the skill of kind of being able to orally communicate. The phonological awareness component, which is some of the listening elements that build on literacy. Word recognition and then builds to fluency, vocabulary comprehension and writing. There's some really wonderful tools in the literacy plan that kind of outline what this progression looks like for students in their time in a K-12 setting. But this is what the focus of the plan includes. It's a little bit more of a broader definition than I think people were thinking about in, as literacy. A lot of times we kind of think of reading and writing and it really opens and expands what our view of literacy is. So to dig a little bit more into what we're doing here in District sixty-five, we have a lot of core resources that we use, but I want to be really clear that the core resources that we use are really just that, they're resources. They aren't things that we're really tied to and following in a way that is really tight just based on the book in front of us. We really try to look at what it is that our students need, looking at different forms of data, what we're seeing in the classroom and where we need to adjust our instruction. But some of the core curricular resources that we are using include Haggerty, which is really tied to phonemic awareness for students. Then we are using a program called Lexia Core Five in the first grade. We actually started using this about midway through last year. It's a way for students to practice some of that phonics, phonics skills that they're learning. The first grade team really loved it. They've been giving us really positive feedback on it. So it's something we could consider expanding either to kindergarten or to second grade, depending on how that continues to evolve in the data that we're collecting there. Then we also use a units of study phonics program. This is a program that we started implementing in 2019. So the students who are, that have kind of progressed and matriculated upwards are currently in fourth grade that have received the instructions since kindergarten in this area. So we're just starting to kind of see the fruits of the labor related to that. We also use the units of study, reading and writing as a core resource. And then beginning this year in sixth through eighth grade, we've implemented a grammar workshop, which is a really explicit grammar instruction. We know that that's been kind of an identified need in the district, so that's something that we have adopted this year. So assessment and data collection, again, everything that we are doing, we want to continue to evaluate and make sure that we have data that supports it and make any adjustments or shifts that we feel are necessary to support our students' needs. Beginning this year, we shifted away from doing MAP or NWA BA in kindergarten and first grade. We felt like it wasn't developmentally appropriate and it wasn't really giving us the type of information that we needed to understand the literacy instruction that was happening in the classroom. So we shifted to a tool called AIMS Web. It's a little bit more robust. It has students identify like letter sounds, they take them to oral reading fluency, has a, a little bit more of a robust that collection tool. So with that shift, we've been gathering a little bit more information about where we might want to continue to make adjustments in our curriculum. We also have IR third through eighth grade and then common grade level assessments that we use kindergarten through eighth grade. And those are something that as we continue to write our curriculum and work on guaranteed viable curriculum that we are developing. Also something to note, last year we did give a language usage assessment at the sixth through eighth grade level. It was a MAP screener that they had available just to see where we were at with some of those grammar components. And that was part of what informed our decision to begin using that grammar resource. Anecdotally, people felt that maybe our, that was a, a big gap area, but really our data supported that with a little bit of this kind of more explicit instruction. We think we'll be able to make some pretty significant shifts in a short amount of time. What else related to? And then I think the biggest thing to note is related to our data collection. Eighty percent of our students are achieving or growing in both the MAP and IR assessments. So we are feeling that the core curricular resources that we're using at this time are meeting most students' needs. But of course, we'll continue to evaluate that. We've been having conversations about what more information we might want to be gathering just to make sure that we truly are meeting students' needs across the district. So our current sixty fifty-five landscape, we're continuing to develop our guaranteed. So our current 60-55 landscape, we're continuing to develop our guaranteed and viable transparent curriculum. We're really spending a lot of time this year evaluating what we are doing in classrooms based on standards. So not based on any core resource, but looking at the standards, prioritizing what we really want our students to be able to do. And then making sure that the resource aligns with it. If it doesn't, we've, we're not afraid to leave things behind or pull in the resources that we think are necessary. We also are emphasizing the Illinois Literacy Plan, those seven key components, and making sure that those are integrated throughout the curriculum as well. We're really focusing on increased explicit instruction. That is a big thing that came out of the Illinois Literacy Plan and just in general, a big talk amongst literacy experts. So more explicit instruction that includes the grammar components, phonics and phonemic awareness at the lower level. We've also been making some shifts to our writing instruction, just making sure that students are really writing in relevant, more connected ways. And then we also have been having some staff training on dyslexia, specifically a program called Take Flight, so that we have those resources available to students who may need them. And again, ongoing data collection to evaluate the needs that we are finding for not just our students, but also any staff professional development that might be needed.
That's it. Wonderful. Any questions?
For the grammar and, oops, sorry, the core, Lexia Core 5?
Oh, yeah.
Are those both computer-based or are those?
The Lexia Core 5 is a computer-based program. It's a way that students are able to practice and visualize what the kind of, the sounds that they're hearing to kind of reinforce.
Like, is it similar to like the math stuff where it's like?
Yeah, it's adaptive and.
Or like where, okay, gotcha.
The grammar books though are old school books.
Which subject and predicate?
It's so funny. Yeah, no, it's so funny because like the teachers have been saying like the students are just so happy to have like a workbook to like write in and get like a star and they're really enjoying that kind of, you know, more typical school experience. Who doesn't love a nice workbook?
So you said the focus is making sure that, you know, what we're teaching isn't necessarily played into a specific resource, but that is related to the standards, right?
Exactly, exactly.
And so I just thought of this one. You said that the standards are also what IAR is based on, right? Is MAP as well or is MAP a little bit more what we?
Not that we haven't, I know you're asking me answers, but do you understand what I mean? Yeah, IAR is more directly tied to grade level, like common core standards. It is the expectation of, you know, what a student would be expected to learn in third grade. MAP, because it is kind of a more adaptive assessment, some of the questions might reach beyond or below, like what grade level expectations might be. The text complexity on a MAP test might, if a student is struggling, it might lower the text complexity so that they're able to answer the questions versus on IAR, it is, the students are reading what is kind of the grade level expectation. So we are trying to teach students at grade level expectations and maintaining those kind of high level standards for them.
Well, so then when we have the two, theoretically, teaching them of these grade level standards should translate to their IAA scores, IAR scores.
Exactly.
But then we also get more complex maybe information from that?
Yeah, IAR, wonderful. Lisa's using this really great analogy that IAR is sort of the autopsy report. It's sort of the overall end, does our curriculum meet the needs? And MAP is kind of digging into some of the detail that's really helpful for teachers on more of the instructional level, day-to-day maybe saying where students are at versus kind of that, did we reach our end goal?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just reinforce, like on the resource issue, there is no one resource that's going to match the needs of all students. In fact, most textbooks and resources pack in about two years' worth of material within each grade level book. Because they're written for every state, every student, everywhere. And so you have to have so much material because everything needs to be packed in there. The teachers have to make a lot of choices within there and there's a lot of work to be done to try to fit it, fit it to the students that you're seeing in front of you. So starting with the standards and aligning the resource to that is a much better way of going about finding what you need to address the needs of the kids in front of you, which will always change. So I, I feel really confident that we will get to a great place and will continue to supplement with resources that are appropriate for all of our kids, who have any other needs that we're seeing. It's been a great start to the year in this.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you. Thanks, Jackie. Okay, tech committee update. Kevin and then Amy and Laura, you are on this tech committee as well?
Great.
I get it.
You don't have to say anything. I think.
Yes, you're welcome. So this year we brought back the tech committee. It's something that had been in place a while ago. Because of some turnover, COVID, there was some opportunity to bring it back since it's been gone for so long. So we brought it back this year with the idea of, with so many things changing so fast, especially since last year when I read with a lot of things changing, with us potentially looking at iPads. Jackie's just mentioned she's looking at a lot of different resources that are involved tech and then a lot of the resources that I look at in terms of subscriptions and just everything we're doing is a whole. We thought it was a good opportunity to bring every, some people in to really look at kind of what our future tech looks like and not so much from the device perspective, but from a how are we using perspective, then are we going to use it in the long term? We've had a lot of conversations, Lisa, especially with that book talk regarding how much do we want to use device? Do we want to use it at home? Do we want to use it, you know, how much we want to use it at school and what do we want to use it for? So that, the committee has really been formed to kind of tackle some of these questions that we have and have discussions about. Really, was it going to look like as we potentially trans, move over to a new device in the iPad over the next couple of years? So that's really what we're looking to do. And so yesterday was our first meeting. I thought it was really good. It seemed that the committee in a whole had a pretty general shared direction and how we kind of felt about devices in the district and age level appropriate type of thing when, when students should use a device. And so what we're going to be looking to do is with, as the committee continues to meet, is have these discussions, go back and talk with colleagues and then bring recommendations back to our group and then eventually bring recommendations to the board for potential long-term use and what our vision will be in terms of there in the district.
Great. You didn't tell me that.
Does everybody know, and maybe they do, this is news to me, the plan with the iPads, like how you explained?
The chart that was been raised that are going to, what we're going to have.
That's, that's still work. That's still work in progress.
Right.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're hoping to do with, we've had some new information come forward with Apple and how they finance devices, how they allow us to finance it essentially at zero cost to us and it really benefits us in terms of budgeting long-term. And so as I've had discussions with our reps of possibly going this route, the plan that they've helped me develop is really allows us to implement this much faster than I thought. Originally, it was going to be a three-year implementation just to stay budget conscious. But with the plan that they've helped me develop, it essentially gets us there in two years. So next year we would go potentially the entire middle school and then the year after that, the entire elementary school.
Ah. No, that hasn't been communicated to the other?
No.
So what's that?
So Amy is looking at it. For all the people that are watching the meeting right now, we'll feel, we'll feel the quiet. We're still, we're still working on it, but that looks like the direction that we go.
I thought it was like, the theme was really like, how can we enhance instruction with tech rather than replace it with tech? I felt like everybody was feeling that same thing.
Yeah, I felt there was a recognition of during the pandemic, we were all kind of in survival mode and they became more of just a tool of surviving and being able to do classroom. And I think everyone's recognizing the need to rethink and shift away from that as we.
I thought it was really interesting from my perspective, and I did not know this, although I'm sure you guys did, but that, you know, I'm like a pen and paper person, but Jay, I think you said that we buy subscriptions to these and like getting hardcover books is an additional fee. Like we don't get that. We get access to the platform right on the iPad or whatever we're using, but like books are just not, if we got them, it would be a huge additional fee.
I mean, it's just, it's just kind of flipped in recent, because if you think about it, it's a more economical way to do business, to be able to update textbooks every year with the digital version and then you're not reprinting and running all those costs.
I just have no idea.
So we are definitely in an ecosystem.
Right.
Where we're surrounded and tech is integrated. And like we said yesterday, we're not going to be able to get away from it. I mean, our students are assessed on the computer and standardized state assessments on the computer. A lot of our resources are on the device. But I really was impressed by the, the conversation with staff and administrators and you guys yesterday of, we want to be thoughtful. We want to do technology in a way that, that makes it more engaging, which honestly, 30 years ago, tech was the engagement tool. It's not so much anymore because kids are saturated. So we really have to rethink that. We're just in a different world right now. And so I was just happy to hear everyone's kind of opening their minds a little bit to think about how it's different now and we need to adjust and adapt. I don't know exactly where it's going to go, but it was a great start to the conversation for sure. And yeah, we will have to rethink allocation of resources and looking at how to find different things and that budget will be a part of that. So that's, it is just a very different model now than it was even 10 years ago, I think.
I'm encouraged that this conversation is starting now. So thank you for looking at that. It'll be interesting to see where it goes.
Yes.
Kevin, how many teachers were there in the week?
Twelve.
There were 15 there and I think three couldn't make it. So there were at least three from each building?
Yeah, it's about, it's about six or seven teachers.
And, and so are they like permanent members of the committee or do, can people come and go or?
No, so we did, I sent out an interest form of who was interested in being in, everyone signs a volunteer basis.
Okay.
And it was interesting because obviously everybody looks at it differently because everyone's using it differently in their classroom. So I think as we go, that'll be good to see what, what they're using it for and what they really, you know, some of the thing. It was great to talk to a teacher. I was like, all right, tell me what it looks like, why you need it for this particular project or whatever. And so it's just great to hear them actually give samples of where it's needed or maybe it's not, you know?
Well, having the conversation makes people be thoughtful about it, right?
Yeah, right.
Thanks, Melissa. Annual State of Affairs, Jay Kuntz.
So the Annual Statement of Affairs is a report that every school district does annually. It is due, it is kind of a, the first three pages are just a short summary of the audit and then finally then there's a page about a short summary of staff and their salaries. And then there's a section on how much we pay vendors, the list of vendors who we pay for. And it's required to be published. The first three pages are published in the newspaper and then it's also sent to ISB. It's due by the end of November. So we're a little ahead of the game. I've already submitted the state and it's being published this month. It is on our website. If you want to see it, going fiscal year '24, all the way back, under 15 years worth on our website. I just wanted to let you know that that's something to do over here.
I ask you this every year, what newspaper is it?
It's in the Lake County News-Sun, which is the local publisher.
Online.
And on our website, is it called State of Affairs or? Yeah, I think Annual Statement of Affairs. It's under Financial Information on it.
Any questions on that? Thanks, Jay. And you're still up?
Life safety and.
Oh, sorry, disposition of assets.
So we're required to notify the board or district, for board policy if we dispose of many assets. Anything that's of de minimis value, we can dispose of and just notify you. We have, I mentioned, I think in the past, the last time I did this, that we had two trucks that we were selling and we could only sell one because we didn't have the title of the second one. We finally received the title and sold that Ford, the 2012 Ford that was having electrical problems to, for $1,500 to a private party. And then we also had a, an excess photo printer that was no longer being used that we were able to sell for a couple hundred dollars. So we recruited a little bit.
Great. Any questions on that?
Was the title just misplaced?
Yes.
Oh, good. If it wasn't.
No, we had, like over the years.
Yeah.
That got filed somewhere. It's actually possible we never got it from the dealer because they gave us second temporary one. And so we just. Stayed.
All right. And life safety and facilities.
So every 10 years, we are required by the school code to have a licensed architect review all of the systems of our schools and update our safety reference plans. This, we are coming up, it is due by, I think, September of 2025 to the state. So there is a contract from our, from our architect to do the work for us. At the same time, I'm going to have them update our 2018 facility assessment, which looks at all of our equipment and capital and assesses its useful life and its condition and gives us kind of a roadmap for building our capital plan so that we can plan things out and make sure that we have the money to make the repairs in need. As needed. So both of those, when done together, will save a little bit of money. And I think the total is just over $20,000 in its annual budget. And we would be bringing it back in November for approval and I think they can get started pretty early in the calendar.
Anything on that? That's required every 10 years by the state, right? Okay, next up on the agenda is listing feedback from ninth grade students. So this was an additional agenda item that I think was brought up in a previous meeting. And we had talked about perhaps the need to find out how our ninth graders are doing or the degree to which they feel prepared once they've been out of our system for a bit. So Dick and I had a chance to talk. I don't know if you want to provide some other background?
You know, somewhere along the way, I'd heard years in the past, we had gotten some input from ninth graders that we had found useful and that they had been able to say, well, we felt really prepared, you know, in solving quadratic equations, but we didn't know trigonometry or something. I mean, it's just an example. But we would, you know, it was useful. But also in trying to look at our mission and trying to, you know, achieve ultimate academic goals and our developmental goals, you know, personal development goals. I just said, well, what better resource would there be to try to develop a metric than, you know, the people that are actually experiencing, you know, what they, what they, what they went through all through, you know, the elementary, middle school, how well that it worked, you know, when you got to ninth grade. Because that's kind of the, that's kind of the proof of the pudding is, you know, are you well-prepared for ninth grade? You know, did you feel well-prepared? So I, you know, it's just an idea. I don't know how difficult it is or if the result would be, you know, worth it or how expensive it is. So I just kind of throw it out there as an idea.
So as some background, we have for the last, I think, four years been able to get first trimester or first semester grades from the high school so that we can see how our students are doing in all the classes. And I've reported those out every year. So we'll do that again this year. We did do a survey, I looked it up, when we did strategic planning, but what we, what we had asked was, we asked our ninth graders to weigh in on the SWOT analysis. If you remember those of you who are on the strategic plan, we did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats document that was based on the community survey and staff surveys and things. So we kind of compiled that as a team and then sent it to our ninth graders and asked them for feedbacks. I don't think that would be a survey we would want to repeat. But we could certainly develop something that would be relevant to force a learner, you know, those kinds of competencies, but also our mission and, and what we're looking to do and provide kids with. And maybe some specific questions, maybe based on initiatives that we've had going in the last couple of years. So I think that's easy to do. The high school was very cooperative in sending it just to the Lake Love graduates. They know who those kids are and, you know, the principal sent the email to them. And I don't think we had a ton of participation on the strategic plan one, but again, that survey was very specific to a strategic. But again, that survey was very specific to a strategic plan. It wasn't really, how are you feeling as a ninth grader? So I think we could absolutely do it, and I think it would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful too, like like how the homework came up in our meeting. The when we, it sort of crossed over in the tech meeting. Do people need to take home their computers for homework? And then there's a lot of conversation, side conversations about how much homework and how to be prepared. That was totally off topic, but like to get an idea of how the kids feel, even with that, like, were they prepared for the amount that they get and same thing, like the specific things where they felt weaker or stronger.
I think it's really valuable information to have. I think it's worth trying it, seeing if we're going to get a good response. Not necessarily if they say good things, but that would get plenty of people to answer them, right? Particularly as we are, you know, setting goals with this new strategic plan and everything. It'd be interesting to get this information, see what they think.
Great.
As long as it's not, I agree with you, like as long as it's not a really heavy lift.
Yeah. So I'm hearing consensus. We want to try and draft something. Is there anything in particular the board would like more information about, I mean, like homework preparation? Is there anything else in particular?
Just, I think, academic preparation, maybe.
Particularly math.
Yeah.
E L A.
But maybe a question also around like social, you know, social emotional.
Are you aware that you're such a small minority of the kids?
In just any, I mean, I think it's important to keep the survey small because I think after, I can't remember what the statistic is. After like six questions, it just drops off and people are like, I'm done with this survey. But as concise as we can get it, even if we could just get, you know, five questions.
Sure. Well, then it could be general, like, rate one to ten, how prepared you felt going into high school and then give them an opportunity or something.
And I think the big thing for me is that we somehow are able to ensure or encourage getting responses from, you know, the, I get the tiers mixed up, the lower two tiers.
The freshmen and sophomore, you mean, or?
No, 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 that tier one, tier two, tier three. So that we get, we get all the, you know, we get.
So it's well, it's a well-rounded response.
We get, we get good responses, not just, not just the best students respond. So that's probably not going to tell us, you know, so as much, you know, great information from that or areas to improve from that. But it's, it's the other students that that get there and are struggling. So those are the ones we, you know, really want to hear from.
I don't know if, I know people don't love surveys, but I don't know if it's worth going out, reaching out to parents of of those age kids too, just to see like, how do you feel your, we prepared your child for for high school. I don't know if that would give us anything meaningful, but just an idea.
Yeah, like survey the parents as well.
Yeah.
We can try the we'll work on getting that, you know, emails back and forth because we don't have them in our system anymore. So we would work with the high school to try and get parents and parents to.
It'd be a big undertaking, but I think that the parents may appreciate even like a parent panel. Like, I mean, as a newbie going in there, like I feel like every week I learn more and more. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I had no idea she had access to this. I'm like.
Like you feel like such a freshman.
I feel, yeah. And so I'm like, it would be great if we could support our, you know, parents going in there knowing.
So like an incoming freshman. Yeah, not here before they go. Yeah. I could ask if people would want something like that.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think it's going to be a case if they don't know what they don't know.
Right?
And so do they want it? And also just playing devil's advocate here, is that really our job?
Well, she's right. No, no, it's just, you know, the Lake Love way of being friendly. Goes back to that.
Yes.
You want to help?
Yeah. Something that we host that involves, you know, a collaborative.
Well, you could maybe do something. I mean, even stuff like.
Like picking up my child. I had no idea.
I know. I was, so it's like things like that, but then also, you know, the study halls that they can take advantage of and just that kind of.
I do think there's a little bit of a different, when it's not coming from the school, now it's coming from, you get more, you get more of the like practical information. So I, yeah, yeah, where if we're not involved, then we don't tell you what to say.
Yeah.
So we could host it, but you know, it's going to ask what they want them. I'm happy to draft something. We can work on this. I would want to aim to send it out after first semester grades are out. Like after winter break, because then I think kids have an idea of what, where they are performance wise, and then they can actually accurately judge.
I think after first semester for sure, because first semester, they're still a bit younger where they are. They're not giving us real accurate information.
All right. So let me work on that and I can bring something back for you to take a look at.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Good addition. Well, all right, press policy one fifteen, do you want to?
Oh, I asked the, I asked the first, the twenty twenty four. So we have our committee resolutions getting ready for the delegate assembly for the joint annual conference. So as a reminder, each year, school districts in Illinois are invited or school boards are invited to submit resolutions for the O N I Association of School Boards to lobby for those in various circumstances. So and then the I S B kind of filters through and decides which ones they will recommend to adopt and which ones they won't recommend to adopt. And then each school district is invited to send a representative to a delegate assembly. And they would then vote with their board's support, which of those resolutions you agree with the the recommendation of I S B or don't agree and want a discussion. So I guess my first question would be, is there a volunteer for the delegate assembly? Because I want to make sure that person takes notes on.
I mean. I'd have you to do it if you don't want to, but I know how excited you are to get your delegates in.
You do get a special room.
Yeah.
We're really good at it.
I can do it again. It was entertaining.
It's a little warm in that room, but.
It is a little warm.
Okay, so as we've done in the past, I think we've gotten to a really good process with this. So I've sent out the resolutions two weeks in a row for you to review and have asked if there are any of the resolutions that you individually don't feel comfortable going along with the recommendation of I S B. And I got feedback that everyone is in agreement with the recommendations either to adopt or not adopt. So in agreement with I S B's recommendations.
That's the first time that's ever.
I think it is. The only thing I will say is that there are a couple of resolutions that were proposed by districts sixty seven and one fifteen, both having to do with safe law. One is recommended to adopt, one is recommended not to adopt. I understand the rationale of both. The one I know that work that they're recommending to adopt actually started quite some time ago. That's been in the works for a long time. The second resolution, that's recommended not to adopt a little bit newer. And I think really just, it's not a bad idea. I think that I S B just recognizes that in order to conduct employment history reviews on current employees would be probably a collective bargaining issue. And. Yeah, would run into some legal challenges. So that's why they're recommending not to adopt. And I get that. So they're really more on, talk to your attorney if that's something you want to do. So as long as everyone else, everyone's still feeling comfortable with going along with their recommendations, I don't think there's anything to discuss this year.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
For the resolutions that they say do not to do not adopt, if those are appealed by the submitting district and brought to the delegate assembly, it's correct that as a board, we feel still those should not be. And should those be considered? Should, do we care if they're considered by the delegate assembly? Or should we, since we're feel they should not be adopted, we just don't want them to be reconsidered as well?
Like if they get up and speak about it.
Yeah, because if they submit something by tomorrow, they could appeal that decision and then still present it to the assembly. And if they do that, then it could be voted on.
So do we feel like that would change any of our alignment with the recommendations?
For, yeah, I guess, are we still do not adopt, confirming that we're do not adopt and then confirming that or it should either be up for consideration if they appeal it?
I mean, I'd say we're all going to be there. So if there's anything you feel uncomfortable with, I would say.
It's just.
Can't we?
Well, I assume we also can get a list if anything is going to be presented. We don't know that at our next meeting prior to July. So maybe is that something that we can look into and and see if the resolutions being presented have changed before our meeting?
Because there's nothing on the fly at the meeting, right? Not on, not like new resolutions, but they won't like present more evidence on why it should be adopted or.
Someone, they might. Sometimes the districts come and say like.
They argue their points.
They argue their point.
But I don't think they bring up new points.
Not necessarily.
And it generally doesn't change, right?
Right, right. Yeah.
So I I would say, and you guys tell me whether or not you agree, I think nothing, nothing right now is going to change the way we want to vote. But let's find out if another, if something's going to be presented that wasn't originally going to be presented, then we can discuss it next meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, just so we can discuss it in the proper setting.
Yeah. Totally. Yes, in an open meeting. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks for doing that.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Yes, thank you very much, Kim. All right. Do you want to talk about press policy one sixteen?
Yeah, so press policy one sixteen is a large packet of policy, although there wasn't a lot to discuss. We really don't as a as a district have a lot of options in terms of implementing or adjusting our policy regulations concerning Title Nine. It's it's something that we're legally required to do everything in there. And we've already been working on transitioning over to some of the new requirements or most of the new requirements. There's nothing in there that we have to decide. We just need to do it and ensure that our policies are in alignment with the law. So I would go ahead and read through those. Title Nine can switch and change often based on who's in power, I mean, quite frankly, politically, like which party is kind of in charge. So this can change often. So we have to be kind of really listening to our attorneys with what, where we are in terms of implementation of the law at this point. So even now, there's some really specific cases going on. So we just need to make sure that our policies are in line with what the law says that we need to be doing and to make sure that our procedures are in line as well. So I would review those. This is a first read and we aren't adopting it for next meeting.
But I will say because Title Nine language is so specific and changes and complicated that it is in our best interests, I believe, to just adopt the press policy updates because they are putting the correct language into all of the processes. So rather than reventing it, we all just.
And in cases concerning Title Nine, we are typically, if we have any sort of issues concerning Title Nine, we're consulting with our attorneys to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do and being in compliance with legal requirements. So.
And we don't have any students whose families are affiliated with political groups.
Okay, so no, there is an injunction against the new Title Nine regulations that is concerning any districts in which parents who are members of certain organizations belong. So we at this time are not.
Not one of the.
By the injunction. So we aren't one of the named districts. We have a mental that we are, and so we keep kind of checking back, but that could change by the day.
Okay.
But no, at this time, we are not one of the named districts. And it actually doesn't have to be a district. It could be a school within a district. So it doesn't, it's not a district-wide thing. If there are any schools with children enrolled with parents involved in those organizations, then the school can be bound to different regulations, previous Title Nine regulations where the rest of the district might be moving forward. So it's a little complicated right now, which is why, yes, we're recommending we adopt the new language and really just consult with our legal counsel if there are any issues that come up. And Tracy, our time coordinator.
Look at her smiling.
Okay, anything more on that?
Okay, then let's talk about the Lake County School Mutual Aid Response Team Agreement.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, we, you had some questions. I know that I put this out in the Friday update, but I want to make sure we put it out there on the record. So Dr. Kerner did answer the questions the board had, who controls the funds when they're collected. And it will be the Regional Office of Education. The fund account will be created to oversee the money and then ensure that members, member districts are kept up to date at each meeting of the Oversight Board. What are the criteria? Their advisory panel will determine the criteria. And the funds will be utilized to administer the I G A, could be for supplies, could be for trainings. And the money would ensure that all districts are prepared when needed. And then question about what if it doesn't get used for a length of time? It is a low cost. There's a potential that it could build up after a few years. But I do believe that Dr. Kerner would be advising that board to make sure that the money then is utilized fairly across the county to make sure that all member districts had had resources that they might need to keep us up to date. Safety and security changes all the time. I would love to say, and I hope that the money does build up and that we're able to do some countywide things as opposed to using it for events that are more unfortunate than that. But it is a very low membership fee. I think it's a nice start towards building some community capacity to help each other in these circumstances, I think we've seen in communities where there are devastating events. We're all kind of scrambling. What can we do? What can we do? Even developing sort of an advisory board where the pot of money can give us some decision-making control and, you know, give us a place to go to sort of start to support. So it's a sad thing that we need to do, but I believe, I think it's a good thing for districts to do. That's my recommendation.
I'm in favor of it as well. It is a low cost to us. And I do like the idea of being a good Lake County partner, you know, their school system. Again, or also, it's just a one-year agreement. So if we do this, we'll have to re-up and re-approve it every year. So if at any point we feel like the money's not being used well or we feel uncomfortable with it, we could always not renew it at that point.
And the intent is that it would be a yearly?
I mean, I think as long as it's needed, you know, so there might be a year where it's like, we haven't really done anything. Maybe we'll just kind of let the advisory board, you know, decide what to do this year and then maybe they're, I don't know. But I do know that it's modeled after some other counties that have done this already. So there's connections there and there'll be an effort to be consistent with how that type of thing is around. Anything else on that? Okay, then let's move on to our action items for the evening. First one is the Lake County School Mutual Aid Response Team Agreement we were just discussing. So may I have a motion to approve the Lake County School Mutual Aid Response Team Agreement as just discussed?
No, I'm.
Second.
Lauren? Yeah. Do we want, have anything more to say about it?
Lauren, can we get a roll call vote?
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
Anne Helm.
Yes.
Amy Cummavonahou.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. Next is the approval of the personnel report. I do need to read this aloud. It's short and sweet this month. So Personnel Report for October twenty second, twenty twenty four. We have one licensed new hire, Jill Wine Burger, who will be a long-term substitute in enrichment at L V E S effective January sixth, twenty twenty five, replacing Amanda, Amanda Haden, who will be out on F M L A at an annual salary rate of two hundred and sixty eight dollars per day. Excited. Be a great fit. May I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report for October twenty second, twenty twenty four?
So moved second.
Lauren, vote please.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch. Yes. Amy Cummavonahou.
Yes.
Anne Helm.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes. That motion passes as well. Next up is the consent agenda. So the consent agenda consists of the following. Open session meeting minutes from September twenty four, twenty twenty four budget hearing. September twenty four, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting. October sixteen, twenty twenty four Policy Committee meeting. The Treasurers Report, the In-Prest Report, the. The Treasurers Report, the Inpress Report, the Bills Report, the Key Card Report. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda for October 22nd, 2024 as presented by Administration?
So.
Second, is there any discussion about any of these?
I have one question.
Sure.
On the, uh, I think there's like a $90,000 payment to the transportation overall. And that was, what period does that cover? One month, it may include some. I thought, yeah, I think you had said they wanted some upfront money to help, help them out or something.
Uh, that, we just paid our first month, August, September, but now we're back on track with October. So that, that really is one month of transportation. It could also include some field trips or, um, athletic events, but it's pretty much just for one month.
But for, is that, is my memory right, there's like $90,000?
That's a typical month.
It turns seventy. Okay, thank you.
It's a, looking at it, it looks like it also includes the buses for the outdoor end.
That's true.
So that, that.
So it's higher.
Outdoor end, also.
Saying that alone, it's a couple thousand.
Uh, would anyone like any, like to pull anything out of the Consent Agenda for a separate vote?
I have another question.
Yeah.
There's a invoice from Lunch Solutions for 5,500. Is that just like their fee for running the program?
Yeah, they pay, they have two staff, they have a staff member who works daily and has an old bunch of stuff that covers their salary as well as the website for ordering.
Oh, so that'll be a regular.
That'll be a regular monthly.
Okay.
That again, it was August, ends of September, so it may be a little bit. Okay, so it is also, it's a proportional to the number of meals served. So as, um, yeah, vibe goes over down.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, would anyone like to pull anything out of the Consent Agenda for a separate vote? No, not seeing any, Lauren, can we have a vote call, please?
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Richard Driver.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Amy Cottle Donahue.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone.
Yes.
That motion passes. We did have one FOIA request this month. Um, since our last board meeting, we just had this one. Details of it are in the board packet. The FOIA section of our agenda is simply a report item, it does not require approval. Um, but are there any questions for Administration on this before we move on? Not hearing any, we will move on. At this point in the meeting, we again welcome public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a public comment? All right, not seeing anyone. May I have a motion to adjourn the October 22nd, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting at 8:32 P M.
So.
Hi. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?